Americans are capable of achieving extraordinary things when they have the freedom and opportunity to do so. This is American Potential, and here's your host, Jeff Krang.
All right. Well, listen, welcome to the podcast. Thanks for listening. And again, talking about removing barriers, government imposed barriers. Sometimes those government imposed barriers are the policies that government puts in place. And you just have to rise up. And we have a great story about that today. School choice, immigration reform, free speech, healthcare, criminal justice reform, the direction our country is going. Did any of those words that I just said invoke an emotional response? Does your response motivate you to do more than just talk about that issue? I hope so. Today's guest turned her motivation into action, and it had an impact and is still having an impact. Stacy Adair is a Colorado teacher who saw a need to reform disconnected and failing school boards in Colorado. So she took action by forming a group. She helped educate and train them, and she went out door knocking in her community to educate citizens on the issues facing their school boards. Her efforts resulted in entire communities being educated on important school policies. And three of those communities later totally transformed their school board membership by removing objectionable members of the board and replacing them with members who support school choice principles. But her story doesn't end there. The group she formed is still very active today, and they're still making a difference. And I'm excited to talk to Stacy Adair about all the work she's done and the work she's still doing. Stacy, thanks for being here.
Thank you. That sounds, that was a great introduction.
Well, you got, you did, you did great work because it is interesting, and I want to talk about the motivation, right? The motivation to do this. People get frustrated with, with things as, as they happen, but usually they just deal with it. And this show is dedicated to the people who don't just deal with it. It's, this is about people who actually take action and decide, you know what, I'm going to do something about it. So tell me about your frustration that you've had with the education system. You're a teacher yourself. And why you decided to get involved and, and take action?
Well, when schools shut down, I knew that that was not good for students. Yes.
Yeah, right.
During COVID, schools shut down, and I knew that it wasn't good for students.
Sure.
So I found other people like me, a few other people, and we started meeting. And then we started growing and Americans for Prosperity hosted us. And so we had a place to meet and we didn't know what we were doing. It was just a bunch of passion, you know, with not any knowledge.
And back then, by the way, there were lots of people who said, oh, you know, uh, we're going to keep schools closed and it's important. But there were a few people, I was one of them, you were one of them, and there were others who said, this is going to do very irreparable damage to our kids.
Correct.
A lot of people poo-pooed that idea, said we were crazy. Um, this was the most important thing. But I think generally now today, most people, even, even some in the education establishment do realize that, not, not that we're gloating here because it wasn't about being right or wrong. But, but the facts do remain. We really did damage kids emotionally in learning. There are kids that are years behind and will never make that up. They were lost in that process. Right?
Yeah. And I mean, I'm still teaching at the same school. We see it with, especially with the third, fourth and fifth graders who were most affected, their behavior, you know, they are very stressed and having difficulties, you know, uh, just coping with regular life. So it is true. What we thought would happen, what I thought would happen when school was shut down, I was like, no, no, that's crazy. We can't do that. You know, a lot of these kids, this is their schedule. This is their normal. And we disrupted that. And even the kids themselves will say, I hated staying home. I hated it. I hated being home. You know, the ones who are in fifth grade, they can articulate it. And so, yeah, we knew it. And so first we started, our group just started trying to say, when we open, we want to open normally. And, you know, that didn't happen, but we just kept going. At first we were just losing, but we were still meeting and we were still fighting. And we just grew and we just took that passion and just kept it going. And then soon enough, the school board races came up and honestly, I don't even, I'm pretty sure I didn't vote in the school board race prior to COVID.
Oh, really?
So I was very disengaged.
So this really motivated you?
Did, yeah, I didn't care who was on my school board. And everything changed when I realized, wow, not being a participant in the system is what has allowed this to happen. So not only am I going to get engaged, I'm going to try and help other people understand to get engaged, but also how? Because it's, it's tricky. It's not what you think it's going to be. And so you can take a lot of passion that I had, but not get anywhere. And that's what I found like the first few months was I had passion, but I didn't have knowledge. And so I was going nowhere fast.
Right, right. Now I want to back up just a little bit though. You, I mean, you got into teaching. Why'd you get into teaching? And, and tell me what it's like, you know, teaching elementary school kids.
I got into teaching after my family sponsored an African refugee family. I just went down to the school they were in to check on them and I was a substitute teacher. I checked on them and thought, I like this. This is, it was ESL, English as a Second Language. I thought, this is cool. I could do this. And so I went back and got my teaching certificate and started teaching in D11 ESL. And just fell in love with it. It's like a combination of helping students educationally, encouraging them, kind of like you're the welcome committee for the United States too. And I liked all of those pieces.
Yeah.
And so this is my 17th year teaching and I love it. And I don't plan on quitting anytime soon.
Yeah. My, my sister was a teacher. She's retired now. She was in the same school district you're in. But she always would talk about that. She was an art teacher and she loved using art to connect with kids that maybe you couldn't connect with on other, you know, in other subjects and things, and that it just really, you know, was inspiring to some kids and it just lit a fire under them. And that's, that's the joy she got out of it. I assume many good teachers get that same joy out of teaching kids.
Yeah. I mean, I love the days with kids, the days that we have meetings and we don't see kids. I'm like, this isn't why I started doing this job because I actually leave work a happier person than I came. Because I get joy from, you know, making these kids like have a better life.
Yeah. So prior, you talked about how you, you didn't even vote in school board elections before, really. Did you ever imagine you would get this involved in it?
No.
And so it was that shutdown of the school system that was the spark that drove you.
That was it.
Had that not happened, you'd just be teaching away probably, right?
Right. Just keep your head down, do your job, try not to call anybody's attention to yourself and keep on going.
So let's talk about school boards in Colorado where you're from. Are they're elected school boards. They're, they're kind of off year elections. And in some cases, they're kind of, those elections are a little bit controlled by, you know, teachers and unions and other groups.
Teachers Union, yes.
They kind of pick their candidates and those are the people that go vote are the teachers and, and others. And there's a lot of apathy, general apathy around the, the country around those issues sometimes, or there used to be.
There was.
There was. And so, you know, they kind of got their way. But in a lot of ways, what happened with COVID, I think woke, woke people up, not just in Colorado, but around the, around the country. Do you agree?
Yes, yes. And people woke up. I woke up. I mean, I didn't really pay attention to what was going on, just except for my classroom, my students, you know? And I think especially the teachers union, they have a lot of power. And that's one thing I learned during COVID. I wasn't in the teachers union, but just doing research and finding out that they're the ones who directed the CDC what to do. When I found out what the teachers union was really up to CRT and all the things that they were doing at their national conference, I really became aware that they pretty much own, have owned the school districts until recently.
Right. And, and, and it's a system built that feeds that, right? With them. It's not a system that is built for our kids. I mean, when we build a system and say, you will go to this school because you live in this zip code, that's not a system built for that kid. Because it might be a great school for one kid, but maybe not for another one in that zip code. Right?
No, and they don't care about students. They really don't even care about teachers. I mean,
They care about union teachers. No, they care about union leadership?
They care about their $79 a month that those teachers make or pay them.
Pay them.
Because I've seen in the last year and a half, teachers who paid union dues for 20 years, go to them for help and they didn't help. Cause it wasn't their agenda.
Yeah. So, so you formed this group and tell us what, what this group did and how you kind of evolved into finally what you started doing.
Well, we were just a coalition of different people who wanted to flip the biggest school boards in town. And so we formed a group and we met regularly. We learned, we worked with campaign managers. We learned how to door knock. We just figured out who wanted to run for school board. And then we did all the footwork and whatever needed to be done to help those candidates get elected. Because somebody can decide to run, they can put their own money into it, but they need boots on the ground. They need people helping them. And so that's where we could fill the void.
So you would say that some of these school board candidates in the past had maybe the teachers union behind them. And that was their ground, the ground force that went out and helped them get elected. You wanted to be a counter to that and be a voice for the kids in these, in these schools. And so you kind of helped build that group to do that, right?
Yes, that's what we ended up morphing into with somebody, because we talked to some people, you know, how can we be most effective? And they said, by supporting your school board candidates. And so honestly, we were just a group of passionate people who, who didn't know that much about what was going on. But we've learned, it's been a fast, you know, learning curve. It's been awesome because now we know. And the teachers union, you know, they were surprised. They were surprised that we won. We, we shocked them. They won't be shocked next time. So we continue to build because we can't turn back.
And so when you say you won, tell me, tell me what, tell me what the, the impact has been.
We won the majority in three school boards, three local school boards.
A majority for what?
Majority of people who care about kids and families and parent rights, you know? We could label it, but I mean, I guess you might call them conservative people, but that's not always the case. It's people who just really care about education and kids having a choice and going to the school that meets their needs and the family's needs.
And breaking a system that's designed really to, to hold some people down, uh, breaking that down and giving the power to the parents and to the children.
Right.
Empowering them.
Right. They deserve, it's, it's their tax dollars. They deserve what they need and what they want.
Right. Yeah. I mean, to think that if, if somebody is wealthy, to think that they're waiting for the government to tell them it's okay to send their kids to a private school. That doesn't happen. They just send their kids to the school that's best for them. But it's people who don't have wealth who get stuck in failing schools and somebody needs to be their advocate. And it's been century, it's been literally a century, right? That, that people haven't had their best interests at heart and fought for them. And so that's what this effort is about. So what's, what's been the, the outcome of that? I mean, has there been better policies that have been put into place? Obviously it's not, you haven't been able to get true school choice instituted yet where parents can just decide they want to send their kids to this school. And so they do, whether it's an educational savings account or something like that. So there's still more work to do, but what's been the outcome?
Well, there, I think every incremental change is a positive. And, um, you know, it, we've gotten parent rights policies. We've pushed back on surveys that were sent out that, that parents weren't notified. We've really worked on improving academics. That's really my group, the D11 Achievement Alliance kind of morphed out of this because I was helping in three districts, but then I wanted to just focus on my own, my own district. And so we have, we are taking care of a lot of things and they're, they're little things, but you can't take care of them until you know about them. And so as a teacher, I'm getting people feeding me things from all over the district, things that are happening. And so the board is taking care of those as we find out about them. And so, uh, you know, the parental bill of rights, several school districts have adopted that. Curriculum transparency, just being more open. In my district, you know, uh, our board president wants to be transparent. He wants everybody to know what the superintendent's contract is, what the superintendent's evaluation will be, what the superintendent's goals are. That didn't used to happen. Everything was, you know, uh, in the dark, done in the dark. So just being transparent and then making these changes as they come up.
Right.
Because a lot of it, we don't know what's wrong until a parent lets us know.
You know, in the past, and I know in the particular school district you, you work in, there, there's a master agreement that is, that is negotiated between, you know, the school board or the superintendent and the union representation. And that determines a lot, that master agreement determines a lot. What you're talking about is maybe shining a little bit of sunlight on that process. What's in the master agreement when negotiations happen, what teachers are supposed to do and not supposed to do and all of that. That's the kind of stuff you're talking about shining light on, right?
Yes. And I didn't even, I, until I got in trouble, I had never read the master agreement. And my friend's like, well, you, you have to abide by it. I was like, really? I'm not in the union. Yes. It controls everything you do, even if you're not in the teachers union. So I read through it and there's some pretty, you know, uh, eye opening parts to it. And if you ask, nothing's about the students, nothing is about the kids and what's best for the kids. It's all about the union and what the union gets. It's really not even that much about teachers and what teachers get.
Right, right. So what would you say to teachers? Cause I think most teachers, even most teachers in public school system, I mean, I think there's a lot of great teachers out there who are very frustrated by the, by the system, by the bureaucracy, right? I was up in Alaska last week and I heard the statement that I think it was for every three teachers in a classroom in Alaska, there are four administrators.
Wow.
And, you know, that's frustrating to teachers, right? Because there, you look at the amount of money we spend per classroom on education. I mean, I don't even know what it is in Colorado. I would venture the guess that it's well over $250,000 per classroom that we're spending. I don't know what the average teacher salary is in Colorado, but it ain't 250,000. So where's the rest of that money going? And I, I think it's things like that that frustrate parents, certainly, but teachers too. So what would you say to teachers who are listening to this and thinking, well, I'm just going to keep my head down and keep, keep focusing on the things that I've always done as a teacher? I mean, they should rise up if they care about the students that they're teaching and be advocates for them, right?
Yeah. And I want to start like a teachers group. Because to get out, you know, teachers who don't believe in what the unions pushing need a group because nobody really wants to stick their head up and get it chopped off. And so, I mean, I've done that, but, uh, you know, I've gotten extra strength from above for that. I don't expect everybody to do that. I think if we had a group, teachers would feel safer, you know, standing up to that. And I recently, a couple of board meetings ago, mentioned, you know, teachers do need representation. But maybe we can find a group that isn't the National Education Association. Maybe we could form our own senate that just advocated for our rights. And later, I think it was the next day, the teachers union sent out an email that said, a known anti-union shill spoke at the board meeting last night. And they're really worried, you know, because we could get rid of them and then just form our own local group that met with the district and said, these are our concerns. This is what we would like to see. Because yeah, every teacher I know cares about the kids. That's the only reason they come to work every day. They don't, they don't agree with the teachers union that it's all about the teachers. No. The teachers, so most teachers don't think that way.
Yeah. So what, by the way, what is this group called that you formed?
Well, right now, the D11 Achievement Alliance is what I formed for, you know, to respect parent rights, improve academics. I haven't formed anything yet for teachers, but that will need to happen because that's the only way we're going to give teachers a voice.
So, but you went out, you were out door knocking and trying to educate citizens on some of the policies and stuff. So first of all, I've done a lot of door knocking. Everybody who's ever door knocked has some good stories. So I'm sure you have some good stories about, about being out and door knocking.
Yeah, they loved it. They loved us. Uh, people are so happy when you show up because it's a nonpartisan race. They don't, they, they don't know who to vote for. So it was a really positive experience because everybody was nice and happy to meet you.
Yeah. And they don't know, I've always found that with school board candidates, people don't really know anything about them. They don't know if they're pro-union, pro-kid, pro-parent, anything about their background. It's almost a name ID game about who gets elected. And in some cases, it's the union name ID game because the union puts out a list of, these are the people we're supporting to all the union teachers who vote in school board elections. So this was, uh, so you got a good reception by people. Tell me about the other people who maybe had never walked ever before and were walking out educating on, on these issues. Did they enjoy it too? They?
Yeah, I think it was all of us. We were all newbies. I mean, I think we, and we all enjoyed it. I mean, we were nervous at first, you know, but, um, the first time I went out, I just watched the person, you know, with me. I was like, no, I'm not going. I'm not doing it, you know? But after a while, and then it's a beautiful time of year and you go out and you do it and you meet people and it's fun. And got, you know, some people just want to keep talking and they're so happy to, you know, meet you. And it was a great experience.
Yeah. Okay. So, so where does that effort go from here? Do you want to continue to, to do that, grow the effort, do it in more places? What's your goal?
Well, for, for me, my, my goal is the districts in Colorado Springs, building those, the community and getting stronger, getting more people aware and involved because like me, there's so many people who don't even pay attention. And they still, you know, there's still, there's still people like that, even after all this, you know, um, YouTube videos and everything. So especially in, I feel like what we've started, if we don't keep it going, then we'll just go straight back to the way it was. And the kids will lose out.
But shouldn't people who are listening to this also, shouldn't there be a, somebody listening to this and say, you know what, I want to do that in my community too? Like this should go beyond your community and should go, you know, people all over the country. And you're seeing this happen, I think with some of the shutdowns of schools, some of the things that are being taught in schools. Parents are much more engaged today than they were a couple of years ago, uh, in, in all schools and whether it's public, private, whatever. They just seem more engaged because they learned through COVID, some of the things that were being taught to their kids, I think, right?
And they need to be paying attention. Everybody in, I don't care if it's private school, charter school, public school, everybody needs to be paying attention. They need to be asking questions and, and knowing what their teachers are teaching. And you know, I have never been offended because a parent gets involved or asks questions, you know? I expect more parents to ask questions.
You wish more parents would.
Any good teacher is not going to be offended. I hear the union teachers say at board meetings, trust your teachers, trust professionals. And I'm like, you know what? I never trusted my kids with anybody. They were my kids. They were my responsibility. And I would get to know their teachers, their pastors, their coaches. That's a parent's responsibility. I'm not going to blindly trust a teacher or anybody who's interacting with my child. So I hear them say that, and I think I'm not offended if, if somebody doesn't completely trust me right out of the gate. You know, I'm happy if you ask questions. If you ask questions, that means you, you're paying attention.
Right, right. And it's a partnership, right? I mean, parents are going to know their kids better than anyone. They're going to know their kids better than a teacher or better than the school. But at the same time, the school may see certain things that they can talk to the parent and alert them and, and let them know. And, and that, that ought to be the way we look at this is, is kind of, you know, a helpful, not an adversarial situation. And in many cases, it has become adversarial, which is bad for the kids.
Well, and if any, if any parent runs across a teacher who doesn't want to work in a partnership with them, that would be, uh, you know, a problem.
Yeah.
I mean, that would be, yeah.
Yeah.
So every teacher should be happy to have her parents involved.
Yeah, yeah. Stacy, what a great story about, you know, someone just doing your job. And then, you know, this, this tragedy that hits us and we have school shutdowns and, and kids being left behind. And you decide you're going to do more. You're going to step up and do more. And you did it for the kids, right? You didn't do it for you. You, you paid a personal price for it really. Um, but you did it for the kids. And there, there ought to be more great teachers who do that as well.
And I think there are, there are, and I have to say, around the state, different groups like ours have popped up and around the country. Yeah. So there's, uh, for Colorado, there's Colorado Parent Advocacy Network. People can look that up. They've, they're, they will help groups start up if they don't have a group. Then there's Freedom Works Best nationwide is helping people nationwide. So it isn't just our group. There, there were a lot of people like me evidently, and we are all getting it done across the country. And I think maybe the teachers union is going to be a little more surprised because they've been operating, you know, without any, any eyes on them for so long. And now people are waking up. So I'm excited that, that good things could happen for kids. And honestly, you know, we know what happens to kids who can't read, you know, that they have poor health. A lot of times they end up in prison and that's, that's a tragedy and, and that's on us. That's on us and we need to change it.
Yeah. And we shouldn't be, you know, I, I look at scores, I think in Colorado, they're called CSAP scores, but in other states, they're called different things. And, you know, school districts will brag oftentimes about, oh, well, our scores are some of the best in the country. And you look at their score and you say, well, yes, but a majority of the kids are not proficient in math and reading at their grade level. They're failing. That's an F. And just because you're better than the next school district doesn't mean you're good. Right? And so I think parents and, and, and teachers need to work together and kids need to work together and find the best solutions. And it should be that, that the parent ought to be choosing the option that's best for their kid. Right?
Well, and so that's the thing is, uh, Common Core has really been detrimental to education. And the charter schools don't necessarily stick with those curriculums that follow Common Core. So they're able to give the kids a better foundation. And what I'm finding is that Common Core is really the problem across the nation because the feds came up with that and gave financial incentives. So most states took it. And so that's the problem. And that's why, that's why choice is necessary. Because that's where it's proving, oh, look, we're not using Common Core and our students are, you know, learning math and reading. And so that's why competition is necessary because without that, we may not know what the source of why the reading scores and the math scores are so low. But that's why we have to have competition. The charter schools will go outside the box thinking because they don't have a big bureaucracy and people just doing the same thing over and over again.
Yeah. Competition works. It works in our economy. It works whether you're selling soap or you're, uh, you know, getting healthcare. Doesn't matter what you're doing. Very important decisions that we make, uh, choice makes a difference in it. The free market works. And so, you know, it needs to work here. It needs to work in, in the area of education. I've said this a lot, but, and I'm sure people have heard this, heard me say this before. We have a lot of problems in higher education in America, right? Certainly. But it's also the greatest system in the world, our higher education system. And it is a system of public schools, private schools, parochial schools, religious schools, non-religious schools, all competing for students. You know, just because I grew up in Colorado, doesn't mean I have to go to the University of Colorado or Colorado State University. I could go anywhere in America and it could be religious. It could be non-religious, whatever. And it's the envy of the world. We have students from all across the world who come to America to get educated. But yet we have this K through 12 system that says, nope, you live in the zip code, that's where you go to school. It's just crazy and we've got to break that.
Well, and I go to every school board meeting now. That's, it's, sometimes it's better than Netflix, but, um, and I'm not even exaggerating. But what I've noticed is we have two union members. So we have five good board members and two union board members. And they push back when the superintendent wanted to accept charter transfers into the district.
Yeah.
They push back hard and it didn't even make sense. It wasn't even logical.
Right.
And so it was just an eye-opener as someone who's been going to board meetings for over a year now to watch it, like, wow, this really does go down the union line. The union doesn't want the charter schools. That has just been so interesting, like, so you're not for students to succeed. You know, one of the charters that we accepted is James Irwin and they have a, they don't have an achievement gap, so they have no difference. The big thing in education is the achievement gap, the achievement gap. You know, everybody's always talking about how to get rid of the achievement gap. Well, this charter school that we adopt, you know, accepted in, doesn't have an achievement gap.
Right.
But we don't want them, even though they, most of their, they are in our district and they, they pay taxes.
Right.
So, but we don't want them.
Yeah.
You know, which was just a, every board meeting is a big eye-opener, watching these people and, and the decisions they make and knowing that it ties back to the teachers' union.
Yeah, yeah. Well, Stacy, you're doing great work. Thank you for stepping up and deciding it wasn't good enough just to be a teacher in the system, but you were going to really have an impact. So thanks for doing that.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Well, listen, if you're listening to this and you're thinking, man, I should do that. I should do exactly what Stacy did. I'll tell you what, send me an email, jeff@americanpotential.com and I'll get you in touch with Stacy and she can tell you how she did this. And we're always looking for new stories. Follow us on Twitter, like us on Facebook, on YouTube, you can catch us there. You can also go to americanpotential.com and you can tell us your story there. You can share your story and Monica may reach out to you and see if there's a way we can help tell that story on American Potential. But I, I really thank Stacy for sharing her story with us today. And thank you for listening to American Potential.
Thank you for listening to American Potential. You may listen to more stories from Americans working every day to expand freedom and opportunity in their communities by visiting americanpotential.com.